Wow, I thought you knew how to deal with them.
I was talking to their boss. Got a meeting tomorrow, we're trying to get some, get folks to. We'll see.
There's some, he thinks there might be a color from worth, they carry salt, salt line, these things they might, do they have samples of that?
Good, ready? Alrighty. We will begin our county commission meeting this Monday, the eighth day of December. Is this our last meeting, John? Last meeting of the year?
Last one.
Then Ken can take over. Ken will be the boss next year. So we appreciate all those that are attending today. We will begin with a prayer offered by John Whitaker and then Ken, Commissioner Robinson will lead us in a pledge.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful to be gathered this morning, we're grateful for the land that we live in. We are anxious and keenly aware of our water situation. We pray that thou will bless us with moisture. Please fill our mountains with snow and our reservoirs and our aquifers with water. We're grateful for thy providence unto us inasmuch as we are meeting this morning as the county commission. We pray that thou will bless the commissioners, that they may be able to deliberate well, that they, their minds may be clear and that they may be able to make decisions that most benefit the citizens of Iron County in this great place that we live. We are grateful for our provident, thy providence unto us. We pray for our national and state leaders as well. We pray for those who are among us that are struggling. We pray that thou will help us as individuals and, and as it's appropriate as government to help them best we can. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. We need to approve the minutes dated November twenty fourth, two thousand twenty five. Is there any discussion on the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for our November twenty fourth, twenty twenty four.
Twenty five.
Or twenty twenty five, geez. Living in the past.
You don't want to start over, dude.
No, 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 no.
Second.
Guys, been moving second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, we need to approve the warrants to pay the bills from November twenty four, twenty twenty five to December seventh, twenty twenty five.
I'll move for approval of claims for payment from November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five to December seventh, twenty twenty five.
Second that.
Been moving second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We will go ahead and go to our departmental reports and start with our building and zoning. Terry Palmer, you're up.
Thanks, appreciate it. Good morning, Commissioners. It's the last one of the year, if you said, so. I think I'll give you a big packet, there's a lot of stuff in there. We're not going to hit all of it, but just some notes for, to look at. Permits as of Friday, we've issued four hundred and ninety-five this year compared to five hundred and forty last year. We are down a little bit over last year. But we've had more commercial come in, I've done more commercials, so we're seeing a little bit switch there, commercial and industrial. So we are staying busy, still down just a little bit. Uh, we've done, we've completed five hundred and thirty-four, probably up to five hundred and forty, uh, plan reviews for the year. Inspections, we've made four hundred and eighty-six thousand, four hundred and eighty, four thousand eight hundred and twenty-six inspections or stops this year. So we've still got a lot of stops and stuff we're doing. We've had quite a bit of stuff going out in Burl, so we're staying busy. One thing we did is we finally, Parowan got their own building department the first of November, so we will no longer cover Parowan for them. We will help if needed, but they have their own building department now, so.
What percentage of workload was that for you, do you think?
Probably seven to ten percent, not too much. It was more, more of a hassle on some situations for some of the projects we got into. They wanted us to try to do more of their zoning and the code enforcement stuff that we didn't want to and we didn't want to get into reviewing their ordinances. So it'll, it's a lot, it's gonna be a relief for what we have, but I've talked to Dan, we will still help them out a little bit where we, if we, if they need it. But they're, they're set to go on their own, so. Two highlighted spots, Nate passed his last commercial, so Nate has all four of his commercial inspection certifications and all four residential certifications, so he's totally certified to do inspections on all phases of construction and building that we have going on. Trent Friday afternoon passed his for his last residential certification, so he is certified now as a residential inspector. So that's been a big relief to get those two there, so we can work on other things that we have going on, so. So we got three of us, two totally commercial and residential certified, one residential certified, so that takes a load there. Other projects we have, all of you are aware of the GL, where we're at with there, we have done all of the footing and foundation on the female pod, all the foundation, footing and foundation on the male pod, they are getting ready to start the, they male pod slab soon. They have poured about thirty, thirty-five tilled up wall panel sections, so moving along fast and furious there. In fact, Friday afternoon, they were setting the big crane up to start standing up tilled up wall panels. So probably two weeks, I can't remember when we started pouring the tilled ups. They had to cure for twenty-eight days before they could start standing them, so we're getting close for standing, starting to stand up till the, tilled up panels on there, so. Busy there. Lakeside Industrial has their third building under construction in the Lakeside Industrial Park. We had a, and you'll have that at regular commission meeting, they did a zone change from light industrial to industrial on their next phase of the lakeside, which is gonna bring some more, Thomas Harker's working with a few businesses there to bring some more businesses into that lakeside, so we're busy there. Uh, the sewer lift station, all the foundation walls and everything is completed there. They're starting to get ready to set all the internal parts for that lift station in the BZI Innovation Park, so they're moving along on that one. Uh, the three battery system, the best systems that we've got are solar sites. One will be going online the end of this month. The other two will be January, February is the last report we had on that one. And then we've got a third one that will be starting. They're hoping just after the first of the year on that other one out by Weko. Frank Nichols has pulled out through, has pulled three building permits for shell structures in the Silver Hills Industrial Park. So we've got more going there, so we're starting to see a lot of industrial.
Is that the one off the Y development?
Yep, going just after you get on the Iron Springs, yes, uh huh. Conditional use permit, Mike called me Friday, was that when I was out to Burl, Friday, Thursday or Friday?
Remember you said you were at Burl one, some point, which I don't remember what your date, probably?
End of last week sometime, and asked me about one data center and I had not heard anything on that one. But Crystal told me that later that day that we had one conditional use permit for a data center on Antelope Springs Road for, on the Jones property that has submitted a conditional use permit application. So if that starts, here comes the projects. So if that is, if they do get started, I guess it's, it's public record now. It's Pronghorn Enterprises. They are looking at doing a six hundred billion dollar project, ten structures from a five to ten year build out. So we're looking at some dollar mountain coming in there if they can get started into next year, and it sounds like they've got some interested parties in that one.
Have they gone to planning commission yet?
No, the application came in last week, so they will be on January's if they've got the complete application.
Cause there's, there's another one that's looking out too, but they're, are they generating their own electricity?
Yes, they will do their own, their own power plant. They're not sure if they're gonna go solar, but they've got a, gonna do a gas power plant. It will be an all self-contained, they will pull off the main power lines that'll go right over the property too, but it will be a self-contained project with their own power plant.
How much water do these plants use these days?
They're not using much anymore with the technology and the chips and stuff they're doing, very little water.
Recirculate what they use?
They recirculate a lot of what they have. They haven't told us an acre, acre foot they're using, but they are way down from what the original first one started, so. Water is, is not gonna be too much, it's always an issue, cause we're low, but for what they do, they do a recycle system to enclose it and save most of what they do, so, so yeah.
Probability of these coming to fruition, what?
This one where they've got a conditional use permit is pretty good. How much they will build out, I don't know.
They don't have one yet, right?
No, no, they've, they've, they've applied, so if they get it, it's pretty good chance that they will get started. When they, when we met with them two weeks ago, they said by the end of third to fourth quarter next year, they would look at starting building, breaking ground is what their plans are. They were further along than to the other two that we've talked with. We've talked with three different companies on data centers right now. And I know Mike mentioned another one Friday that I had not heard yet.
This is a different one?
This is different, yeah, this is a different one. This came, this came to, I guess came to bear what, like last week, two weeks ago with the first, the, at least the first time we heard it, these guys have been talking to them.
Pronghorn?
Pronghorn, yeah.
They've, they've talked to Reed a couple times, a couple months ago, they were in with us about a month ago. And they've got a new office, they set up a new office just a couple months back in Salt Lake, based out of New York. So this one is pretty promising, that it looks like it could go in. We've got one.
Is that along the Kern River pipeline? I mean, they have.
They are just. Just east of it, there you go.
Power's a big deal with these things, they've gotta, they've gotta provide their own power.
Yeah, and they are, and they, this one was going to be a hundred gigawatt. It was big, but their power plant's as big as they're looking to put it out to. So, so yeah, and then the E three one, I have not heard anything on that one. The other one, Russ Reber was working with one that would be just north of this one that's out there, right off the railroad tracks, and then there was one just off of Antelope to the south side of Antelope.
This is just phenomenal to watch happen.
It is.
They're, well, they're popping up all over.
Oh, all, all over. Beaver, was it Beaver County or Miller Camp, Millard County?
Just approved one in hold and they just broke ground.
Just broke ground on that one, so we've got the area for it, so they like the area, so. It's incredible what that happened. I didn't think there was that much demand for it. Apparently there is. I kinda keep in the shadows and underground, so I don't know a lot of what, what there is, but.
Is this, I mean, I, I gotta think this is in anticipation of what AI is gonna bring to our communities and what.
I think so.
What AI is gonna do for us.
I think so.
Cause we're, seems like we're sufficient right now with what we have, just doing our searches online, whatever, right?
But with AI and advances in AI, your report you sent to us Friday, your questions you had on the trailers, what IA does, AI, AI does.
Was that incredible? I plugged in, I wrote that and it spit out an ordinance.
Exactly.
And I read through and it was pretty.
So, so yes, with.
Saying what that does.
With what AI is doing, yeah, exactly.
Sometimes it doesn't tell the truth.
But with what there is, it's gonna take a lot, and this one is bigger than the one out by Newcastle. The Newcastle was, Sam, did you sit in on that one? That data center discussion, it was, the one in Newcastle is about the third of this size, I remember, but they will both be doing their own power. All of them would be doing their own power, so.
Any of them propose nuclear?
Not yet. We mentioned it to one, but they, I don't know, they haven't come back with it yet as to what they're doing. They're still looking at their own power plant and how they wanna do it. One of them, we know, this Pronghorn has talked more gas, a gas power plant, so.
In, in the couple that I've talked to, nuclear's always, has been a, just not where we are, not, not where it needs to be with regulatory on the federal level. Um, I talked to Congresswoman Malloy about that, she, she felt like probably three to five years that the regulation, like, the, the technology and the regulatory process would come together at that point, and it would probably be a viable.
At that point.
A viable option.
Talking about one up in Brigham City.
Yeah, Representative Peterson.
Is that, is that the timeframe for that one or?
I don't know.
No, that one, that one's a little closer.
That one's coming soon.
Yeah, Representative Peterson, which is the chief of assistant building official for the state, used to be the building official for Box Elder. We've set meetings with him and he says that one is closer than the three years. They're still out a little bit, but that is more reality on that one for up in Box Elder County to bringing it to pass and get it online, so. It's there, it's getting there, nuclear is getting online. It's, it's getting safer, more efficient for it to put a nuclear power plant in here. So I know they talked out to Green River going that way. I don't know where they've gone with that one yet, but they've talked about putting one out there, so. It's, it's coming. Safe, yeah, safe as anything else, so. But yeah, the data center, the one on, and it's on Jones's property right there on Antelope. If you go west of Weko and hit Antelope, it's right there, crosses on the north side of Antelope Road. But they're, sound like they're serious. Until I see a building permit and the first shovel of dirt turned over, it's just hopes and wishes still, so. Any more questions on those ones? Code enforcement, Riley's been busy. I won't go over it, but the last two pages in the report are the, second to last page is just phone call complaints. Third, the third to the last is they just list of phone calls from complaints from surrounding landowners that are complaining about mainly travel trailers in the area. The last two pages are actual complaint, or site visits that Riley has made onsite with travel trailers dealing with complaints. Not all of them we've dealt with yet and addressed, and I know Commissioner Cousins, we're gonna meet afterwards to talk a little bit about that, to see what we can do with the travel trailers. So he's busy, we're trying to work with them, most of them, he's trying to work with them, we're trying to work mainly to get them cleaned up, to see if we can get them in compliance of nuisance side that way and still have the trailers there. Uh, next page, our budget. Uh, we have taken a hit on the budget because of the elevator. We are a little bit more than expected there, but it is in operation now. State elevator inspector was down Friday and passed and proved everything on it. So we have a fully functioning elevator now that should last us.
Six weeks.
Fifteen, ten to fifteen. We've talked. I'm not saying.
It's hung in there since about nineteen seventy-four, so I'm feeling good about it.
And we have talked to Martin, Martine about putting new skin covers on the front door with the county logo on it, making it more of a wood look like this, and then redoing a mural scene on the panels inside. So we're looking at a couple more things to give it a little more look, update look on it, to see what we can do. He's trying to find information on that one. But that elevator is in operation now. Other than that, we did have the mid-year change in the cleaning, so those two things have taken a hit on the budget. But the elevator we knew, the budget on the cleaning, we might be able to soak that, absorb that into some of the other stuff. Planning, Reed left us Friday, he retired, so he's done. Brett, you'll hear from him in a little while in the regular meeting, he's picking up on things, starting to understand and learn the community. We have quite a bit still going on as far as planning stuff. We've got two gentlemen here, over one of the issues that you will hear in a little while. But we're staying busy there. Maintenance, building maintenance, uh, we've started, if you've been around the building department over there, the Justice Center, we've started redoing landscaping around there, finally.
The wall looks great.
Get there, we'll turn more into spring during the front, getting that grass out and do some more zero scape there. Trying to get into reducing some grass and water usage there, so. Staying busy there, we've got, starting to see some furnaces, mechanical equipment starting to go down with age. Started, I think we replaced two, Thane said we've replaced two in the last couple of weeks furnaces, so starting to see a little bit of that. They've helped Mike Worthen on a few of his projects, get things ready for winter time. They've helped Stephanie at the senior centers, getting some things done there. Fairgrounds, they did spend quite a bit of time getting some water leaks that we, they chased for quite a bit, had some electrical issues fixed up at the fairgrounds. Just other things, so they're staying busy there with the maintenance, trying to keep up. The one last note on that second page is to your call about the noise on Iron Springs Road. Reviewing, and I didn't bring the ordinance, I put the numbers there, but reviewing the ordinance, I think we would be fine and wanna work with Sam on this. Is we, I think we're, under the ordinance, we can put a sign, noise, noise ordinance on both ends of Iron Springs, telling them that the engine brakes are in violation, the ordinance between ten PM and seven AM. Because it does reference that, between ten PM and seven AM is that they need to not use those in the residential, going through the residential area.
Between ten PM.
Ten PM and seven AM.
Through the night.
Yeah, during, through the night.
So during the day?
During the day. That's gonna be a gray area during the day, because you got a lot of vehicles, a lot of stuff there, but even if we put that noise ordinance on there, we don't put a time restriction on there. Let's see, I, I would recommend, let's put them up and see how we're, how it is. I don't understand why they're using engine brakes as much as they say they are out there. Cause it's flat, coming back in from Weko, from Musket Pule there, I could see it doing a little bit more because they're flying in there and they hit that hill, slow down coming through there, I don't know. So we can look at that and look at how we wanna ride it up if we want to. I just wanted to present that, that under the ordinance, noise ordinance for nuisance, I think we could put signs up there if we want to. So I'll get something together, I'll work with Sam and then I'll get it to the Q three Commissioners and then we can decide how we want, how we wanna address that. Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, just the, and you got the email I forwarded about Darren Bushman, the five county vacating some of our office space.
When?
And they left some furniture, he asked me, and I asked, I, I talked to Ken, I didn't talk to Mike yet, but they, they had some furniture, they said, you want us to leave it there? I said, sure, we'll use it. If, if we don't use it, we'll throw it away.
And I did respond, it says, we're good with that. Are they vacated now?
I don't know.
Not sure, okay, I didn't know if they.
No, it's coming real quick.
Cause I didn't see a date. I figured if it wasn't immediately, it would be by the end of the year and I was gonna ask, that was the other question.
I, I'm sure they are now, if not, it will be.
Okay, because we, let's look at it before we rent that out to anybody else, because we got some offices that are full, to overfilled, that it might help us if we're going some other way. Okay, and then I'll, I'll stop by and see if they're there today and, or if they're gone when the timeline is, okay? Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Rich engineer, are you a rich engineer or you?
My wife said her mother told her to marry rich and she didn't understand correctly. So you have what you have. So Commissioners, uh, we have gotten into the winter season now. We've bypassed any of the concerns that we were able to deal with, the minor concerns with any flooding, uh, and that's been great. We stayed on top of that, we've got, at least we did not receive any reports of damage in the county. We had some overtopping of roads, we had some material on the roads, which the road department took care of and then we followed up with, we did. If you are down on Old Ninety Ones on the south side of the valley, you'll see where we created a receptacle for, for a lot of silt. I don't know, Bruce, how many yards of silt you had to take off of ninety-one, but I think it was about three or four hundred yards.
That come off Coronado's?
No, no, this is county line, came down off the mountain, yeah. And so we created a repository for that, it will not, we do not believe it'll cross ninety-one again. It's a pretty nice. We'll, but it's claimable. We'll still have to maintain it, cause it's still bringing sediment off, but it won't be on the road, which is a hazard. And so we, we took care of that. A little bit of Chickashaunee Cliffs had some work that we did there in conjunction with the road department and Matt working on that. But we, we stayed, we stayed ahead of any serious issues, even though we had a few late rainstorms and things. The retention pond is completed, looks good out there in a, on the edge of painted desert and the property that we purchased, it has been completed. It's got the capacity of about a hundred and thirty thousand acre feet of water. It's a big pond, bigger than most residential areas built. I think the only one that's perhaps bigger is the one Phil Smith built and dug out there on fifty-six and the one that they did for Iron West. Those two are.
Where'd you put all the material?
We sold it back, we sold it back to the, to Sun Rock. They hauled it off, they dug it, they hauled it on.
They didn't need for it, good.
Paid us, wasn't, it was what, what we could get for it, and so it was a just, just moving money from one side to the other. And so that's done. We're going, we've got the gas line now lowered on forty-eight hundred for the Webster ditch, we're waiting for the utility on the other side, the fiber optics to lower. The, uh, the gas company lowered it eight feet, so that now we can come out of Three Peaks subdivision there behind Three Peaks where all that water comes down the Webster ditch and continues, but backs up because there's, won't take enough water. We're gonna put in a three-foot culvert in there and cross forty-eight hundred, and now that we have the pond to receive it. Working with two, both the, two developers on, on the north side of forty-eight hundred for, for turning any excess water back toward Lund Highway, so we can monitor the, the amount of water that goes into that retention pond, and if it starts to bother us, we can turn it to the west. And that's, we're working with that. I just spoke with Justin Christianson from U. Justin Christensen from UDOT, uh, a few minutes ago before I walked in, we're gonna meet this afternoon and then we have a meeting in two weeks to discuss Iron Springs Road and its process. We have enough money with the commitment from us as the county and the, and the federal government to go to Desert Mound. So we will go to Desert Mound with a three-lane road, I, I reported that to you before. Working with Bruce, we're working with UDOT and what our contribution will be, our half million, how much of that can be road base. Uh, Bruce and I have talked, there's a lot of road base material that just needs to be, uh, processed out of the landfill, a lot closer. And so that's gonna be part of the bid package, which will go out in the next, uh, next month, the bid package will go out to four Iron Springs. Iron Springs will begin early spring as soon as, uh, the asphalt companies are up and running and are approved for laying of asphalt, uh, in May. They, they can start as early as May depending on the weather, uh, so we look forward to that, as you know, the high T will begin just before the rest of Iron Springs will begin. And so we're coordinated, in fact, that's part of the bid package for the I, high T is that they have to be prepared to coordinate with the Iron Springs project. So the, if there are two separate contractors, they are, are required to, to, uh, coordinate so that there's a nice dovetail there, that'll be good. So we'll have three lanes going at least to Desert Mound at this time. What else has, has been going on, it's just been a lot of.
So we had a discussion, I think our last commission meeting, Bryce, um, needed to drain one of the shooting range bays. And I told him to call you, I told him you bought some HDP pipe at a deal and he can maybe swipe a piece of that for a piece of culvert to drain.
Well, that would be great.
So if you got something you could spare.
Sure, sure, we, we, we were looking for the big stuff in that purchase, uh, and we've got a spot for that and we got a bonus with all the twelve-inch and eighteen-inch stuff that came with it.
You need to put it in one of those corners to drain that, it gets filled with water and then it's a pain for those guys that wanna go shoot.
Good, yeah, happy to do that.
Be calling you.
Uh, I just got a message, our, we've got a, a ditch clearing bucket coming on the way, articulating.
How big is it?
Uh, five foot, five foot, uh, but it's, it's got a knuckle in there, so, so it not only does this, but if the slope's a little different, you can do that. It's, it's an articulate, we got that out of Illinois, they're shipping to us.
That machine I ran a fills up after that flooding out there, when Dan Jesson and I cleaned that, that had a five-foot mud bucket, it worked really good.
Yeah, yeah, and that's gonna go on that, that, that'll be, uh, attachable to that new three thirteen that we.
Uh, approve. Work on the case too, or just?
No, you know how these companies are, let's just make that an inch smaller or an inch bigger. It is like what, uh, phone chargers used to be.
Still are.
Use our brand or nobody's.
That smaller machine will handle, handle that, okay?
Yes, yeah, yeah. So, so that's, that's, uh, done, uh, we ordered, uh, a few other pieces of, of, um, equipment, just inexpensive stuff, three, four thousand dollars. To help to maintain the channels and, and stuff like that, Amber called me, I'm gonna meet with her, her goats are up and ready to, to do a practice run. Clear some borrow ditches, I asked her to look at eight hundred, I think that's where it would work, uh, well, to, as a trial run, we've got some traffic there, we've got the goats there. And we'll see how they work together with traffic and stuff on, eight hundred's busy, but it's not as busy as, as trying to use it, uh, maybe on fifty-six or something.
She did acquire some goats?
We, she's got ten and ten collars, so we'll put them to work. Uh, Matt's got goats and I mentioned to him that, you know, he's got about fifty goats, so I said, you know. The, the clean way for us to do this is you buy the collars like Amber did and we'll, we'll rent your goat by the, by the day. Cause then it's a clean deal, we don't own a piece of it and they own another piece, if we own the collars, then we'd be, which portion of this rental is working? So we're gonna see how that, that works because some of those ditches are hard.
Keeping them where you want them?
Well, that's what we're gonna find out, if we have any dead goats on, uh, eight hundred, either people are driving too fast or the goats are breaking the, the electronic boundary. You gotta train the goats, that's what Amber told me, you put them in your field where there's no, no hazard and you learn which ones are obedient, which ones aren't, which ones can. Understand what the situation is and those that'll always jump electric vans. What else is, is going on? That's about it commissioners, it's, it's just been day-to-day busy operations.
How's the sign shop doing?
Good, good.
New, new quarters working great for him?
The what?
The new quarters, if you fixed it for him?
Yes, yeah, those, those are working great, that's working overall. And so we look forward to, to putting out for next year an assistant, which will speed, uh, keep things more up to date. So.
Your conversations with bidders on the Iron Springs Road and using our material at the landfill, has that, have you proposed that to them already or?
That's gonna be part of the bid package.
That they, that they need to get their material from there?
Correct, that'll be part of the bid package, that, uh, we, we are, are the providers of, of the, uh, road base. So that'll be our portion, isn't that about right, Bruce? Right, yeah, I want to meet with Justin, uh, so, oh, just, just, it's, it's, uh, just a more of a follow-up. With that, uh, antelope, no, pronghorn, pronghorn, uh, uh, data center, one of the things the fellow from New York said is. They like to know they can do it, that's been their biggest hurdle across the country is to have assurance that their permits will be approved and. And they, they liked what they heard from us a couple of weeks ago, how our permitting process is working and they said, that's the number one hurdle they face across the country is. Is just making sure the municipality, the, the government entity that is, is writing the permits. They need that assurance before they start. You can understand that, don't spend a, a ton of money on something that, the permit process, and they like the fact that once we issue a, a conditional use permit, we don't. We don't, uh, go in and say, oh, well, we want to change a few things, so we try to think really well ahead of, of all the anticipations. And, uh, we're, we're kind of excited about that, at least I am as in the engineering department, maybe Bruce not so much because it's just more road to maintain, but. One of the things that one will do, it'll require that they pave out to their project, which is about seven miles off of, uh, uh, antelope.
Off, uh.
Off of Iron Springs.
Iron Springs Road.
Antelope Road, yeah, so, so we'll have.
Maybe they can start at Desert Mound.
Yeah, that's what I was. They really need to start right there.
Yeah, 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 they, they don't need three lanes yet, that's the trouble, John, that's the trouble, they need, they need that, but, uh. It's, it, you know, things are happening and it's pretty, uh, it's better to, uh, to steer the ship if it's gonna come to port. Rather than to stand around and watch it port, so.
We, we've spent some time last week talking with some of our counterparts in other counties that have kind of dealt with these kind of things and. You know, one analog is IPP in Millard County and it had a, a significant and vast effect on their, their taxation and their county budgets. So, and I believe Luke wants to have a brief discussion with the commissioners afterward today, so.
True, yeah, I grew up in Idaho Falls right next to ANEEL for years, if you got up early enough, you could see the sailors standing on the corner waiting to go out there. That's where, one of two places they trained sailors for nuclear, uh, powered ships, submarines and aircraft carriers and, um. So I kind of have a firsthand experience with nuclear power, a lot of people have their concerns about it and I, and I understand that, but. The reality of it, I feel bad that in the fifties we didn't take the lead on it, or we would all be talking about buying a nuclear-powered car. Small engine would run that thing, I mean, if they can do it in a nuclear-powered ship in the fifties, uh, the USS Nimitz. And it's never had a, a serious accident on a, on a contained ship, you know, I don't understand why, why we've, uh, been so afraid of it, so. Anyway, thanks commissioners, any other questions?
Thanks, Rich.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Bruce, Public Works.
Morning commissioners, thank you for letting me come here, we start with the road department, um. Just, I, I guess I'll just go into, to Antelope Road, it's our longest, straightest road in the county. Um, they said they do, when, when we met with that company, there's a lot of leveling work, a lot of, uh, culverts, um. Maybe even a concrete bridge because there's some, there's some water issues and they were willing to do it, so we're behind them if they're willing to, they, they said we want to be good partners. So there was no issue for me there. The roads, we got striped, um, new rule twenty-twenty-six, anything over thirty-five miles an hour has to be striped, we've got ninety percent of them done, I. They were supposed to try to get, um, we were trying to get Mid Valley done last week, but with that little bit of snow, kind of hurt us, we gotta have enough warm day to, to get it to dry fast enough.
You subbed that out or do you do it yourself?
We sub it out, yeah, we subbed that out.
Like straight stripe or?
Yep, straight stripe. So, um, we're working on the engineering for Gold Springs, Platt and Platt are doing that. Hopefully we get that this week, I met with them last week and they had a lot of the preliminary stuff done, we've just got, I gotta get that thing. The BLM gave us approval to do it, but I gotta have a thing, a final that says this is what it's gonna look like, then we'll go out there. Um, I think it's about three miles that we're gonna move out of private property onto BLM. And then it'll be up out of the riparian area, we keep flooding out, every time it rains out there, we flood that road out, um. And so hopefully we can get that done this winter.
We've got all the approvals from the BLM?
Mm-hmm, they, so two directors ago, they gave us approvals, we've just been waiting on the engineering, it's taken a while for.
That's pretty awesome, wasn't it, they pushed that through quickly then?
It'll be nice, I hope they do, I hope they do. The same time we're gonna be there, we'd go work on fifty-six hundred west out in Burl, that some of you are aware of the Kevin Wood Holt thing going on. And as far as I know, we got one meeting left and then we have the go-ahead, right, is that the way you understood it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What is the latest on that, are we going around or are we going through?
Going through.
Yeah, it's what was documented when we originally mediated it, the judge signed off on that and said, yeah, we're gonna enforce this. Now we just gotta get with all the parties and make sure that we're all on the same page.
Got it, I think that's this week, isn't it, is it Wednesday, I, I think it's this week sometime. And we're, we're working on the survey for the Summit Road that goes down to the gap underneath, uh. Summit's Center Street, it, it goes right along the freeway and there is times that it gets really dusty. So it'd go from there all the way down to Ellen Gardner's place and we'd like to get that, it's a pretty good road, we don't have a lot of hauling on it, we would have to tune it up a little. But we'd like to chip seal that this year, if possible, if we can get the fifty-six hundred west deal out west done and the, uh, Gold Springs, then we'd like to get that chipped. Currently we're working on the east frontage up north of Paragona and it's the same thing, it's just super dusty and it, the dust comes out on the freeway. But we've only got about a month, three weeks left there and then we'll be able to chip that this summer, put a double chip seal on there. And then work north, just keep working north until that thing's all the way done. They have like Jeep rendezvous that go up Cottonwood and so there'll be fifty, sixty Jeeps on that road at one time and. It gets a little dangerous because it's so dusty for the freeway and then there's a lot of, uh, agriculture out there and they have semi trucks. One of the semi trucks was going pretty slow and a car tried to pass it and there was a car coming the other direction, you couldn't see because of the dust, so. Just barely missed a near head-on collision, they crashed, but it wasn't head-on, so we're working on that one too, um. Our budget's looking pretty close, some of our line items are over, but as general rule, the bottom line's still good. All our mountain roads, we got bladed and cattle guards cleaned, culverts cleaned for the winter, uh, most of them roads have road close signs on them now, in fact, all of them do, um. We just finished up some fall patching, um, we did a little bit this last week too, we had to patch a few roads that it got warm enough. We've been blessed with warm weather, so we're making hay while we can. And then all the oil, that, I already went over that last one. Jeremy and I intended a DEQ training.
Bruce, just a question before you move on, so are you still buying a portable crusher?
You know, I don't think we're gonna be able to, um, for a couple of reasons, one, we can rent one so much cheaper. We can rent all the parts cheaper, so we can rent the belts, we need two crushers, a screener, we can rent them for roughly twenty to thirty thousand a year. And it was eight hundred thousand just for the little one, and so.
You can pull those down a road and are you gonna, I mean, look at doing that with some of our mountain roads or?
Yeah, yeah, eventually, right now, we don't have the, we just don't have the manpower to do it, I don't have.
That's one of the reasons.
Or the skill, you know, the people that, to do it, that's, that's one of the biggest reasons is, and then. I, I bid it out and I met, I went to a lot of different meetings with a lot of different crushing companies and they all said. Who's gonna maintain it and I said, I guess we will, we gotta learn, you gotta show me how, and they said, rent it, you can rent it for, you know. You could rent it for twenty-five years and not have any maintenance, or you could buy it and you'd have maintenance every five, so, and you're still less than eight hundred thousand.
What, what about subcontracting some of that out and is?
Subcontracting, I mean, that's why we went to the buy.
Not just to rent the machine, but have them do, do the road too?
Extremely, well, the biggest reason is we can do it so much cheaper, uh, good example is Iron Springs, Iron Springs are gonna redo Iron Springs. Seven and a half million dollars for three miles and we resurfaced three, I have it right here. We resurfaced about seventy-five lane miles this year for a million five, well, not even a million one. So a million five hundred thousand, it's just so, it's just so much more costly to, to sub stuff out. I mean, we can, but you, you just don't get the bang for your buck.
We had even looked a few years ago at, um, using some of the special service district number three money to help buy a crusher. But Bruce kind of crunched those same numbers and it.
We tried because it was hope, to get stuff crushed in place to so much money and we were spending about a half a million dollars a year on having people crush our stuff. But we're gonna have to, I don't know, we're just gonna get creative, probably rent one.
Okay.
Any other questions, commissioner?
Sorry, that's, yeah, that's, sorry to interrupt.
No worries, um, moving on to the landfill and collection, um, Jeremy and I attended a DEQ training the other day, they're trying to do. They're trying to get them at least once a year, they typically, they've been, they've been, uh, once every other year. And some things are changing, a lot, the, the new people at the DEQ are really pushing recycling, they did a survey. And the, the survey's over, but we haven't got the numbers yet, I called and said, well, the numbers come in, I really think they're gonna try to encourage us to. To do recycling throughout the state, um. We'll see, we'll see what their numbers come in, they did, I, I just don't see it being feasible at this point, other than. In two thousand eighteen, I think seventeen, eighteen, somewhere along there, we were doing about a thousand tons a week. Um, as you can see from that last sheet, right now, um, at the end, at the end of November, we've done ninety-two thousand tons just this year. So we've almost doubled what we were doing in two thousand seventeen, so there might be, there might be a point where we could, it'd be, uh. Economically feasible, but at this point, I mean, we don't know, we gotta wait for the, for what they, they had on their study coming in. But things, things are changing there a little bit. They got a new administration. And so we learned a little bit of stuff on tires and fires. Fires continue to be a, an issue. Just the batteries. I was in the pit for, I don't know, three hours last week, maybe four hours last week and found four or five lithium ion batteries that people are disposing of. And maybe they put them in their trash cans. I don't, I really don't know what that, what that's really going to look like, how we're going to continue to try to keep that out of, out of landfills. It's just something that's in everything. You know, the, the little vaping machines they have now are lithium ion batteries. Your toothbrushes, lithium ion batteries. Your kids' toys are lithium ion batteries, your bikes, your scooters, your.
What can people?
Your tools.
What can people do with, I mean, can we put out a, do a PR campaign to, hey, please dispose of these and have a place where?
We really need to, but we don't know where they go yet. You can take them, but they're so horribly expensive to, to send off like a hundred dollars a battery is what we learned at the one meeting.
Can you, can you create a special place at the landfill to put them like we do with?
Well, the, storage is what's hard on them. So the storage of these things is the, probably the most dangerous part. You have to have lined concrete structures to store them because once one goes and then the thermal runway goes, they'll all go.
How much does a flamethrower cost to rent?
I don't know. I think it's cheap and fun, right? You get some stuff done.
Mike volunteered, yeah.
Yeah, Mike wants, well, I think he's got one in his garage.
You can buy them, you can buy them on Timu now. I mean, you can get one relatively cheap.
So there, it's not just us. It's the whole country, whole world that's, that's experiencing this. And so we're hoping to follow what, what, what's coming down from the top. So we're just going to continue to monitor, see what we can do. Now we're sending some of them off. We really need the public to understand these things are causing us issues.
Bruce, would you like us to try and add something to our bills? Do we have a message yet?
No, because we don't know if we did. What would you do with them? If you can't take them to us, what are you going to do with them?
And if it's a hundred bucks for?
Yeah, we, we've got to.
Battery out of a ten dollar doll.
There's a committee of us that, that is formed as landfill managers. And we're trying to figure that out right now. So we just gotta, it's gotta figured out. But yeah, something like that. We gotta do a PR campaign at some point. And so Salt Lake or Trans Jordan is, is probably taking the lead on this. But we're all working together to try to figure out a spot to take them because there's nowhere to, you have to send them somewhere. And the freight on them is horribly expensive. Because they're dangerous. If any of them are bulged or heating up, better move away fast because they, they go pretty quick. And once they go, you can't put them out. You just have to kind of let it burn out.
It's not like another fire that would, you can just pour some water on.
Yeah, if one starts in your trailer, start a backfire in the other side of the trailer and just let it go faster like with your flamethrower. There's, you can hit them with water and it cools them down. But once they, once they're on fire, I don't, I've never seen one go out.
Do you guys just pour dirt on them?
No, we use water. We use water and stir it. Yeah.
Do you get fires that are quite deep that you can tell they're like smokes coming from out of the ground?
Not really. We have had that in the past. Usually that's not the case. When you hit these with the compactor, they go pretty fast. It's usually surface fires.
Kind of that pressure and kinetic force of the compactor that?
You know, there's, they just look like little triple A batteries inside there is all it is and they're all connected. And they break and they get hot. They'll break and, and transfer. One of the ones I found a month ago, I was out there and I could hear a ticking. It's just tick, tick, tick. And it was a smoke alarm and it was just striking to some aluminum foil that was right next to it. So it's just part of our life and we're going to have to figure it out.
Well, if you, if we, if you figure something out, I think, I think at least we could do some messaging that way. And I think we could read, uh, reach out to the municipalities on, on their messaging as well.
Right.
Once, once we know what to say to them. I mean, now we don't even know what to say to them. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, it's hard.
We still have one position that's unfilled. We hired a guy out of Texas. He said, I can't come for a month. And then Friday before he was he called and said, I'm not coming anymore. The exact same thing happened to us today. We were supposed to have a guy start today. He called Friday and said, I'm not coming. So we're still looking for employees out there. Our numbers are rising. You can see we're at ninety-five thousand tons for this year. We have a lot of, well, ninety-two thousand. We do have a lot of capacity and our compaction rates are way better with the nine thirty-six. We're getting more in, in less space. But yeah, we're, we're doing good that way. That we was able to, like I was telling you, two thousand eighteen, we only had one, well, we had the same amount of people as we do today. We had, we've only hired one additional employee since seventeen. We're doing double the numbers. But one of the reasons is we have better equipment. So that, that nine thirty-six is able to get more done in less time and better compaction. So.
That's awesome.
Yeah, yeah, it is. Our equipment so is, is, we're doing pretty good on equipment, I guess. Scott's doing a really good job. Scott and Jeremy are doing a good job keeping it up. We had our test during Thanksgiving because we tried to read all our stuff done on a Wednesday. So that'll test us for Christmas Eve. The landfill will be open Christmas Eve and then the day after Christmas is one of our bigger days. So just if anybody calls your, talks to you, the only day we're really close, we're going to close half a day on Christmas Eve if we can, if we can get everything picked up. But we should be able to do it. And I've let all the other cities and entities know that that's the case and then we'll be open regular hours from then on. Day after Christmas. Brian Head gets a little nervous. They're busy. That's their busy time of year. And so they have, they have a lot to bring the, the next day. Any questions?
How's your water doing with the hooking up to the district?
Yeah, it worked. So we, you know what? We found a lot of flaws in our water system, but we've totally redone everything.
A lot of leaks or something, did you?
Yeah.
So you got a new line from the district's line over?
We got a new line to everything we have, with the exception of the dog pound. The dog pound's still on that well. It producing five gallons a day or, I mean, they can spray stuff off, but it's not a lot. From the top of the.
Is there a reason why we haven't tied the dog pound into the new connection?
Probably because we're just going to eliminate that eventually and, and the dog pound will go into the, to the sheriff's office or something eventually. There's just the cost of putting it on there is.
Quite a ways.
Yeah, it's just too much money for what, for the amount of time that it's going to be there.
All right.
Any other questions? Any other answers?
Bruce, appreciate it.
Thank you, Bruce.
John, do we have, is Dr. Blodgett scheduled?
He didn't get back with us and I don't see him, so.
Very good. All right. Well, we'll go to commission reports. Commissioner Blake, do you want to go?
Sure. Just have a few things. I've been working a lot the last couple of weeks on our public safety things. I had a meeting with, with Gold Cross Ambulance just to talk about some of the projects that they're working on. They're actually expanding their facilities both here in Parowan and in Cedar City. They're ultimately going to add two extra, or two more full-time trucks. That'll bring the full-time trucks here up to six. So we'll have six.
Countywide.
Countywide, one in Burl, two in Parowan, four in Cedar. So seven ultimately. They actually are, they've got to build new crew quarters in both facilities to, to facilitate twenty-four hour, twenty-four hour crews. They've actually started here in Parowan. Once the Parowan project is finished, they're going to move on to Cedar City. That is going to substantially increase their abilities and just provide a better service for folks here in the county. They're already providing a really good service. They just recognize the growth and we've, and there's been some challenges. So they're going to immediately start working on those things. Had a meeting with Chief Cavalry of Parowan Fire. They've got some issues with dispatch, just some, just some, we've got a new, you know, Chief Cavalry's new. I'm just going to help facilitate some things there to get some things ironed out with dispatch. Just to kind of help them run smoothly. I'm kind of the, the clearinghouse when it comes to, to the fire services. That's looking forward to that. That's going to be really good. See, John just came in from the summer games. We've spent a lot of time over the last couple of weeks meeting. Sam was out of town, but Chad met Maria and I, President Benson from the university and John. We feel that we're, we've reached, we've got, we've got all the bumps worked out of our agreement with the, for summer games in the athletic department and we'll present that today. Commissioner Robinson and I and Luke and Nicole met with Marcus at Cruising Associates this last week to talk about, talked a lot about data centers and just some other things financially within the county. They're our, our municipal advisor. They give us a lot of good advice. And lastly, just like to publicly thank Reed Erickson for his thirty-plus years of service. Reed provided us a really great, a really great service, really smart. I think we're really lucky to have Brett and wel- welcome him. I think he's going to step right in and, but we really, Reed's done a lot for us. I just want to thank him on his way out and hope he enjoys his retirement. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, just to follow up with what Commissioner Blake said, I never worried if Reed would be prepared for a presentation. He did a phenomenal job and, and you always could count on Reed. So wish him well in his retirement and thank him for his service. Several of the things that I've participated in over the last two weeks have been already covered with the data centers, with the continual jail meeting, progression of the jail project going there. I was able to spend a day with, a good part of a day with Bruce going around and looking at different projects that are going on with the Iron Springs Road and being able to use material from our, that we have stockpiled there at the landfill. And looking forward to offsetting our costs with our own materials. So that'll be fantastic to be able to utilize that. We went and visited the shooting range also, looked at the flooding situation there and, and that's been discussed today too. And we, we drove around Montavista and looked at the issues that the landfill's having there with garbage collection. And the condition of the roads in that subdivision are terrible. We've had vehicles get stuck there doing garbage collection. So that needs to be addressed and we're looking for an option to work through that with Montavista. Also got a call from a citizen in Montavista concerned about the noise that trucks are creating and Terry addressed that. And so we're, we're working through that and see what we can do to, to alleviate that. So that's it.
Okay, thank, thank you. I have a few things. I had a, I have a, I had an on the phone meeting, over the phone meeting with Kim Lee Horn. They're an engineering firm. They are working with a company called Silver Rock Transmission and they're running a new transmission line. It's a three hundred and twenty mile line from IPP to Eldorado, El Dorado, Colorado, or I mean Nevada. Eldorado or El Dorado? I can't remember. I don't know if I wrote that down right. But they want to meet us and I set up a meeting January fifth at nine o'clock AM for those that are interested, especially the commissioners, probably planning, zoning. Rich, but they, they, they just kind of wanted to know what was going on in our area. I talked to them about the transmission line that Rocky Mountain Power is doing from Three Peaks down to Purgatory. And told them they might get with them to, you know, join forces so they could just upsize that power line through that section and, and maybe Terry, you, I, you know, you, you, you should be there too if you can, but maybe join forces so that that, it would save them both a lot of work. Because these, these projects, I think it takes maybe ten years to get these transmission lines approved and all the easements and things approved. So they wanted to meet with us. Again, January fifth at nine. We had our last.
Did you, sorry commissioners, did you set a place for that meeting?
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry. It's, it's in the, in the, in your, your conference room, Terry, at the.
Terry's conference room.
The building department. So.
Hope you can make it, Terry.
Hope it's open.
I never asked if we could use it. Hopefully we can use it, Terry. We had our last jail meeting. Part of the discussion was that there's a gate that the sheriff would like to put in a automated gate there at the end of Horse Alley. That's historically been a dead end road there. It goes from city to county road. We want to put a gate there so the deputies can use that to come and go, but we don't want the general public using that. The only, I, I did contact Cedar City, Paul Bitman, and he said, probably the only thing we need to do is check with fire department with Cedar City. So I called Mike Schertz. And he said they would, they would, they were good with that. They just want to have a lockbox or a code of some kind so they can get through that gate in a, in an emergency, which is totally understandable. I met again with Cedar City. We, we have a weekly meeting on talking about combining as far as Cedar City and Eneek with the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District to combine forces in, in regards to developing new water sources. Using their new water tank, they're looking at some booster pumps to reduce the, the state has come down and mandated Cedar City needs to chlorinate their water, especially the springs come out of the canyon. That won't happen yet, but, but as far as the rest of the system, they need to do something different with chlorination. I can't say that I understand it totally. But to do that, they've got to get the pressure down. The, the pressure is extremely high coming into Cedar City. I think it's over three hundred PSI. It's extremely dangerous. And it puts a lot of pressure on the wellfields out in Quichipaw. And so they're looking to use some booster pumps, use the tank. The, the water district just barely finished. How big was that tank? Was it fourteen million gallons? Four million, four, four million. So it was, so they're looking to use that, that tank, which will be really good for everybody to join forces there. I couldn't make the, the meeting with Marcus. I had committed to go to the Ten Thousand Beds fundraiser and that's, that's a really great organization. I'll just put a plug in for them. It's a organization that, that provides some scholarship funding for individuals that struggle with addictions. And they give them free, because those, those facilities are very expensive and they, they donate beds. They have about two hundred and fifty treatment facilities across the country that they have relationships with and ask for donations to people. And they coordinate that with individuals who maybe can't afford to go to a treatment center. And Chrysler, it's Gene and, I think his name, Chrysler, Chrysler, or they do, they do a great work. Had a Zoom call the other night with, with talking about the West Desert Water Project. It was with the Great Basin Water Network. It was, I'll just say it was interesting to say the least. That's about all I'll say about that. So that's the report I have. We will, what time is it? We'll take a, let's take a ten minute break. We'll resume this meeting at ten twenty.
Ready, John?
Yes.
You're good. All right, welcome back. Appreciate those that have joined us in our county commission meeting. We're going to make a slight change to our agenda. We're going to go to agenda item number three and address that one first. This is a public hearing discussion and possible approval of our proposed development agreement between Iron County and DDJ Development LLC regarding the planned development of approximately seventy-seven point four five acres of undeveloped property generally located at the northeast corner of thirty-two-hundred North and twenty-three-hundred West, Cedar City, Utah, applicant DDJ Development. Brett.
So, John, if you could swap this over real quick. No worries. All right, so as was mentioned, this item is for a proposed development agreement titled as the Adams Farm subdivision. So, the property that we're looking at, it's three different properties that comprise about seventy-seven point four five acres. So, here's generally where the property is located. It is on the northeast corner of twenty-three-hundred West and thirty-two-hundred North. So, this is the zoning showing kind of all of the surroundings of the property. So, the two northern properties within the project site are currently zoned R half, and then the property right on the corner is zoned R four K. And then to the south of the project is actually Cedar City. So, that's all of this area that you can see to the south. And then kind of surrounding the project, there's some residential five-acre property. To the north, you've got the Monarch Meadows subdivision, the Estates at Sunrise Ranch to the west, and then Fife Town a little bit further to the west, all of those being within the R half zoning designation. So, this is the overall proposed master plan. And as you can see here in this exhibit, you've got thirty-two-hundred North, about, you know, a third of the way up. So, everything on the south side is actually within Cedar City. So, the portion that we'd be looking at for this development agreement within the county is everything north of thirty-two-hundred. So, we'll jump over this slide. It zooms in a little bit more. So, across the entire seventy-seven point four five acres, it's proposed to have, as written in the development agreement, approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-five dwelling units to provide a mix of both single-family residences and townhomes. As you can see, there's a variety of lot sizes proposed as well. So, on the north end, closer to the existing subdivisions, Monarch Meadows Estates at Sunrise Ranch, you've got the one-acre lots, and then it kind of tapers down a little bit. You get into half-acre and one-acre lots. And then down here in the corner, you've got those smaller single-family lots that are less than half-acre. And then everything else in the southeast corner is where the proposed townhouse lots would be proposed to be located. So, the development agreement is to essentially approve the overall use, the density, and the general configuration and development standards. So, there's going to be some details that are not within the development agreement, and that's because the project is still going to have to come back in for any of the subdivisions that are proposed. So, a lot of those details that you'd normally see within the subdivision, those are going to still have to go through that standard process that we have. This is again just to really look at it from a much higher level, I guess you'd say. So, some of the benefits that are described within the development agreement, it does talk about centralized drainage. So, rather than having multiple pockets of different basins, there would be a centralized basin located kind of within the center area of it, kind of in combination with the proposed park area. So, this portion here in the center with the drainage and park area is about four acres, just for a little bit of scale reference. There would be public access and walking trails that would connect everything within the county, within the Cedar portion as well. So, there'd be a complete loop around the whole development. I think it was about one-point-four miles around that whole loop that's proposed. There would be additional off-street vehicle storage. So, obviously, when you get into those smaller lots, especially townhome, oftentimes there's not, there's not the space, you know, to park additional vehicles or trailers or whatever the case may be. So, our code does require that they have outside storage areas specifically designated. So, this portion here labeled as the outside storage, it's about two acres. One of the things that the development agreement does specify, though, is that the townhomes and the development as part of the full master plan would be able to utilize that outside storage space as well. So, not just the units within the county, but all of the units within the master development. And we've already touched on the open space area. That's the four acres. There's also, there'd also be another park portion within the townhomes. It's, I think it was about point four acres. And then, again, just providing various residential densities, you know, between all the way from the one acre down to smaller single-family lots, down to the townhomes as well. So, there was a public hearing held. That was held last Thursday on December fourth. So, there was a pretty lengthy discussion that was had at the planning commission. It was about an hour and forty minutes on this specific item. So, there was, again, a lot of discussion amongst the planning commission, some good, good public comments. You know, we had some of the residents come out from, from Monarch Meadows, from Fife Town Estates at Sunrise Ranch, so kind of all those surrounding subdivisions to, to voice their concerns. And I think some are here tonight as well, you know, to reiterate some of those. But just some of the ones that we touched on that were of concern were flooding issues and drainage. Obviously, with the topography out in that area being very flat, there's additional concern of, of this project site developing and how that might impact them further to the north. There was discussion on traffic issues on twenty-three-hundred, just about how it's, you know, kind of a narrow roadway. There's no turn lanes. Oftentimes, things can get pretty backed up, and so concerns with the additional density here, you know, how's that going to impact that? Schools being at capacity already and how that would be addressed. Loss of the rural atmosphere, you know, with the increased density, not having the infrastructure out there for the increased density. And then a comment about how, you know, they feel like if this does come in, the infrastructure should be one of the first things to, to come in to accommodate and kind of help mitigate some of those concerns. So, after the discussion, the planning commission did make a recommendation to approve with modifications. And so, we'll go through some of those changes that were included from that Thursday meeting. So, generally speaking, there was just a few additional, I think, square footages and acreages that were, that were specified, that we can see there in the red lines. And then specifically, there was talk of the height of the townhomes. The code already restricts it to two stories, but we just wanted to specify and include that it wouldn't include the two stories here. And then this actually, in just talking to the applicant, it mentions here that the townhomes would not exceed a hundred-and-forty units. They looked at it again over the weekend, and it's actually going to be less than that, that they would even be able to accommodate. So, that's actually going to be changed to not to exceed a hundred-and-twenty townhouse units. So, less than what, than what we had presented at planning commission prior. And then the one additional recommendation that was made as part of the planning commission's motion was just to specify the clustering of the townhome units with a legal description. So, that provides a little bit of wiggle room, but generally speaking, they wanted to ensure that if we were going to allow these townhome units to be clustered, that it would be specified and designated within that outlined area there. That's really probably one of the largest items of why this development agreement is, is coming forward, is the fact of those townhome units being clustered. So, you're probably familiar with our county ordinance that requires separation distances between clusters of townhomes. So, again, as part of the development agreement, they want to cluster all of the townhome units together, generally because it, they feel it fits in line more with what they're doing in Cedar City, and it also helps to provide larger lots, you know, next to those existing subdivisions. So, for that primary reason, they, they're requesting to cluster those that's in conflict with the ordinance. But it is, it is allowed to task and bring this forward, you know, with the development agreement. So, there's just kind of a general overview and summary of some of the things, the size seventy-seven point four five acres, the zoning. It would provide a maximum of three units per acre across the entire development. All the rules would be vested within the development agreement. So, even if there were changes made to the code later, they would still have what's in place today essentially with our rules and regulations. And then the development agreement would not expire until all the units are built out and there's certificate of occupancies issued for all of them. So, it would allow that to live on even if it took, you know, fifteen-plus years or more to, to kind of fully build out. So, if there's not any questions, so would be a public hearing item here as well.
I have one question. As far as the Stevensville ditch, is there adequate room for maintenance of the Stevensville ditch like we've talked in the past?
There is, yeah. And so, they indicate, well, they've got the seventy-five-foot Stevensville ditch demarcated on there to accommodate for that drainage.
Good. Could you state your name, please?
If I may, Tyler Melling. To clarify on the Stevensville ditch, so we, we do recognize no occupied structures within a hundred feet of that center line. In the city's development agreement, we also mirrored that to be by that higher standard, so it is consistent. As we develop, we may encroach into that a little bit. The county does allow up to twenty-five feet of encroachment for non-occupied structures. So, for example, that vehicle storage area and/or the walking trail as we get down a little further. But, but we will leave, you know, at minimum seventy-five feet clear from the center line, no occupied within a hundred feet.
Very good. Thank you. All right. Any other questions before we open? Chair will declare the public hearing open for this agenda item number three. If you would like to speak, please state your name.
Lori Brown, and I'm currently a resident of Monarch Meadows and serving as the HOA president. The main concerns that we have had about this development is, of course, the high density being buttered up against our, back of our, the south end of our subdivision. The developers given us some reassurances that those will be one-acre lots and half-acre lots. And then as it moves further south towards the city portion, it'll be where the, where they're showing the townhomes. We agree, we were happy about that, pleased that that won't be high density against us. We do have some questions and concerns about water retention. On their plan, they show a centralized water retention basin. The problem is, is in that one-acre development, where does that water go? It is not going to flow uphill to that water retention basin. It's going to flow down. We've had several flooding incidences where the water has come across that field, hit our cinder block walls and, you know, come around and cause some problems of flooding inside the subdivision. There's also had water come down. The one major flooding event came down and filled in the back of, into the subdivision. And of course, walls had to be knocked down for the water to continue down the street. Had we not sandbagged that south entrance, we'd have had some substantial flooding inside of our subdivision. So, the issue that we have with these acre lot section up there on the north end is where's that water going to be retained? The developer has mentioned that part of their CCRs would be that the homeowners themselves would have to retain that water that's produced inside their, their yards, their lots. Our, our question to the commission would be how, what kind of legal recourse or what kind of guarantees we have that, that will actually take place. What happened in our development, we, it was designed to have a open ditch drainage system. The development changed hands several times, and consequently, that drainage system was destroyed, was built over as various contractors came in and built houses and filled in the drainage ditch. And I can understand the contractor not wanting to put a, have to put a culvert under every driveway in the subdivision. But nonetheless, it has created water problems. So, we think that water issue needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Any others?
David Price. I'm a resident in Monarch Meadows also. What, what Lori had mentioned regarding the water retention is a big issue, but we would like to see that the, the high density goes to the south end and to our property lines up there that, that we're kind of locked in, that that stays the one acre and half acre lots, and then move the density south. We'd like to see that, if, if possible, some way in writing to where, to where we do get that, or some, some way that it's locked in. Because I took a picture of the sign that they had posted, and it says, one-acre lots, three units per acre on the sign that was posted for the public. So, I don't know how, if that, the three acres or three units per acre, if that moves south with that, and we stay at one acre and half acre lots up against the north end, or if that three units per acre can slide into that north end also and create more density. More density creates more water problems. You get more concrete, less penetration of the water into the ground. So, that would be it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tyler Melling, just to address some of those comments as part of the hearing, I think those were good points brought up. To start off with the density, I, I realize the sign was somewhat confusing. The, the three units per acre as an average across the entire development, that is memorialized here in the, in the agreement I'll, I'll reference in a minute. And, and basically, what we were doing here is, is instead of going off of just the general density of the R four K and the general density of the R one-half, which would actually be quite a bit more units than what we're asking for, we instead wanted to have this as a cohesive, all pre-planned subdivision with the clustering on that southeast corner, which is why, under that performance subdivision with the open space we have and everything else, we came in at the three unit per acre average. That does not mean multiple units per acre on the north end. So, specifically, the development agreement does say on, I think it's, well, the numbering may be a little off, but roughly page eleven, I think it's on section eight D, where it talks about the development areas, districts, densities, and uses. There is a portion that says that we can unilaterally modify the exact location of different lot sizes with some things that we are locked into. So, so long as each development area maintains a similar frontage and access to and from twenty-three-hundred West, so that's really critical, right, that we, the, the frontage and access, because we, we want to, we don't want to have lots fronting twenty-three-hundred West, right? Also, that the one-acre parcels remain at the project northern border. So, so we are locked into that. So, those are one-acre parcels, not multi-unit. And then, and that the townhome uses remain clustered at the project southeast border within that area that we've defined. So, we did adjust that. And then, as, as far as the drainage, again, that's, that is what Mr. Hamilton was, was referring to. We, we still at every subdivision stage have to comply with all the drainage requirements. With those larger one-acre lots, where it is flatter, that means that each lot at C of O needs to be graded such that it is going to retain its own stormwater and will not bleed over to the other lots. And I believe the event that that has to plan for is like three and a quarter inches of rainfall at once. So, so whether through Birmingham or other, otherwise, those do have to retain. The culverts aren't, you know, as, as we've had in the Estates at Sunrise Ranch, the county doesn't really like culverts in the right of way. So, we have to get creative with how we do the driveways and, and ditches and everything to maintain that. But in any case, because there is no frontage on that northern end, that'll be where things slope and retain. So, we, we won't be bleeding over into the other subdivision.
And will you be developing all these lots? Are you going to sublet some of those out so you can control that?
We, that's a good question. We, we reserve the right to sell them and have others build. These, the, the owners of the, these pieces are not the same as the construction side. There's, there's a little bit of overlap, but it's not a hundred percent overlap. But that is how we plan to do it, is, is to have Velocity Homes construct the dwellings. And, and in any case, those drainage stipulations will also be addressed in the CCNRs. And unlike the Estates at Sunrise Ranch across the street where we have CCNRs but no HOA, so enforcement's a little trickier with some of that stuff. On this side, because of the centralized drainage, because of the recreation amenities, we do have to have an HOA. So, so there will be an enforcement arm.
So, there is, there is enforcement availability there.
Yes.
Tyler, would you address the capacity of your, I guess it'd be a retention basin, right?
Yeah. So, we, and we touched on this in the planning commission meeting. We oversized it. So, so of the park area, we took about a quarter of that as a steep fenced-in, large drainage basin. That will cover a twenty-five-year storm. And, and I know we, we talk hundred-year storms, twenty-five-year storms, two-hundred-and-fifty-year storms. If you have one of those anywhere upstream of, of say, a channel like Stevensville ditch, right, you're going to have one of those storms very frequently somewhere along the upstream. Because this isn't taking offsite water, we're talking just what falls on the site. So, it's more of a true reflection of, of, of the rainfall. So, the, the basin itself will accommodate the twenty-five-year storm. The park is overflow up to a hundred-year event capacity. And then the outdoor storage area for boats, trailers, RVs, is a two-hundred-and-fifty-year capacity. So, before our streets in the subdivision, which will be also kind of a lower grade to accommodate stormwater flow and everything else with homes above, before those streets even start to get inundated, you're going to have, have to have a two-hundred-and-fifty-year event. So, we've over-engineered that because we want, we want everyone to be protected.
So, the outdoor storage is recessed to have water capacity?
Yeah, it has some excess capacity. It's, again, we, we don't want people's stuff to flood either.
Right.
But it's better that than houses. So, it, it will be set below the street level just a little bit.
It's not just boat storage?
No, not, right. Yep. Every two-hundred-and-fifty years, we'll have a recreational amenity there in, in the lake, right?
Some boats may end up down the wastewater treatment plant.
Exactly. So, no, and then, and then further with some of the drainage, I, I know the county's been working as well with Flying L, and, and we're accommodating some easements and things like that for drainage as well. So, we're, we're being good partners with that. And that's why we also left the city portion of the project set back a little farther from the center line of the ditch.
I appreciate the new ordinance with the setbacks on Stevensville. So, we have room to get a trac-o and get in there and maintain. That's part of the, that was part of the problem with our flooding before with some of the other subdivisions. We, there just wasn't room to get in and work with trees, and it was, it was hard. So, that's, that's a really good change. So, that's good.
And the county has since, you know, when, when the ditch was dredged most recently, piled it all up on the west side of the ditch, which is our side and, and Monarch's side. So, if, if it does flood, it'll flood onto Brent Hunters Field, not into this development.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close this public hearing. And Brett, do you want to wrap up?
Yeah. So, really, there's not, there's not a whole lot more, I think, to, to mention unless there's any other additional questions that you have for me.
I don't.
No, that was comprehensive. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate it. Is there any other discussion among the?
No, not for me.
Not all entertained a motion? In that motion, if, if you make a motion, we need, on page eleven, we need to, on, in section D, towards the end there, it needs to go from one-forty to one-twenty on the townhomes, not to exceed.
So, it'd make a motion for approval of a proposed development agreement between Iron County and DDJ Development LLC regarding the planned development of approximately seventy-seven point four five acres of undeveloped property generally located at the northeast corner of thirty-two-hundred North and twenty-three-hundred West to include a change of not more than one-hundred-and-twenty units. What was the restriction on the one-hundred-and-twenty?
It was one.
The tap for the townhomes.
Not more than one-hundred-and-twenty units for the maximum residential density. Did that cover it all?
Second.
It's been moved to second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Appreciate the good report and, and the questions and answers. We'll go to item number two. This is a, a public hearing discussion and possible approval of a proposed zone change ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash thirteen to the Iron County zoning map. Zone change from LI Light Industrial to I, which is industrial on approximately seventy-seven point four four acres located near sixty-eight-hundred West and four-hundred Nor, Cedar City. Applicant is Diamond S. Holdings.
All right. So, as was just described, the location of this proposed zone change, sixty-eight-hundred West, you got four-hundred North about right here. So, the, the project access would, would primarily come off of Highway fifty-six and two-hundred North. So, this just shows the zoning map. You've got this light industrial area composing here. Then you've got some agriculture twenty-acre to the west. And this is actually quite a bit to the north, Monovist Acres, where you get into that residential. It's a, it's over a half mile to get up into there. So, really, we're just at that Y, you know, the split between Iron Springs Road and Highway fifty-six. So, this just shows the master transportation plan, again, generally showing that primary access will be two-hundred south here and then up north on sixty-eight-hundred West to access the site. So, if you've been out to the site, this was recently sixty-eight-hundred West has already been paved all the way to the north towards where this project site is located. all the way to the north towards where this project site is located. And within that, there's already also a central Iron County Water Conservancy District water line within 6800 West that you can see as part of that project area as well that's already located up there within it. So this just shows the, the property ownership. It is all Diamond S. Holdings. And then you've got Fiddler Canyon LLC to the north, and then additional Diamond S. Holdings. So they're, they're primarily the, the property owner out here in a lot of this area. And so that's kind of one of the drivers for the proposed change from light industrial to industrial, is so that they can include some heavier uses that the owner could offer to potential tenants. So they actually have had some tenants approach them that would not be permitted within the light industrial area. So they, they think it might be just a good idea for the industrial park as a whole to allow a little bit more of a variety of uses, some of the light industrial, but also some of the industrial uses. And that, the lower in this slide just kinda gives us a little bit of a summary of some of those changed uses, some that, you know, are, are not allowed or allowed with the CUP in light industrial that could either be permitted in industrial or, so you've got, for example, it requires a conditional use permit in light industrial, but just an administrative land use permit in the industrial zone, distribution centers, ag fertilizer products and storage. One that, I actually think that's wrong now that I'm looking at it here. Permitted uses in light industrial but requires CUP in industrial. So chemical and explosives manufacturing and storage is not a permitted use in light industrial. It's only permitted in industrial. So, that, general industrial activity, geothermal power plant, junkyard, some of those higher intensity uses that would be, be permitted. So again, just a quick overview. Applicant and owner is the Diamond S. Holdings. They are represented by Go Civil Engineer, Dallas Buckner. All the parcels together total 77.44 acres. So I guess just another note on the acreage. So they had originally, when they approached, approached us to, you know, see what the thoughts were on this zone change, it was a much smaller area, about 17 acres. It was just one piece. And we, we thought it would probably be better to include just a larger area for that industrial. So that's what finally led us, led the applicant to the, the proposal for the 77.44 acres. It is within tier four. Again, zone change from light industrial to industrial on those properties. And those services are available, as we've kinda noted with the, the water. They would be, just be doing in septic systems. And then again, legislative decision, so it's brought here to the, the commission. This also was held, a public hearing at the planning commission on December 4th. There were no public comments on this item and the planning commission recommended approval of this proposed zone change. And then again, these are just some of the, the evaluation criteria that we look at when we're looking at, you know, a rezone. Generally just to see if it, if it's a good fit for the area, if it has the services necessary in order to accommodate for the use. So those are the evaluation criteria that, that staff looked at, that the planning commission looked at and that commission can look at as well to, to analyze and evaluate. But if there's not any questions, we could jump into a public hearing on this one.
Thank you, Brett. So the chair will declare a public hearing open for this agenda item number two. If you'd like to speak, approach the mic and state your name. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And is there any wrap-up we need to do, Brett, or?
Nope, nothing additional.
All right. Any questions among the questions?
No, I've actually visited this project area and it's, I think this is appropriate. Toured the area with Terry the other day and, thank you, Terry. Oh, good.
You're hanging out with rough, rough company.
I didn't give him the option to get out, but he didn't.
We were out of ways from town. I wasn't, I wasn't walking. He didn't give me the option to get out until we were out west.
How fast were you going?
Just kidding, Terry.
No, I would move for approval. I have to look at my computer, because I forgot my glasses, so it's a little. Move for approval of the zone change ordinance 2025-13, the Iron County zoning map zone change from Light Industrial LI to I Industrial on approximately 77.44 acres located near 6800 West and 400 North in Cedar City.
So I can tell motion.
It's been moved to second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Really stinks you get to our age and you can't see without glasses. All right, let's go to, let's go back to number one. Or, no, wait, yeah, Juan, you ready, Luke? Public hearing regarding amendments to the 2025 budget.
Okay, so this is for current year budget 2025. Couple of amendments, those were sent to you guys, so they should be in that packet. But a couple of different things, we'll start with our general fund. There's a grant that, that we manage the funds, they run through our budget. It's the Parwan Prevention Coalition Grant. We're updating or adjusting that amount by 25,000. All of those funds are received back. So we'll spend 25,000 more than what we had budgeted, but we'll also get that 25,000 back as well. We did receive some geothermal payments. These were kinda unexpected. It is leased through BLM for geothermal. I'm guessing it's that big geothermal project they're doing over in Beaver County. I believe part of it is in our county. But we received some one-time bonus payments, over $600,000. We just got a payment one day in our account, so I did kinda track down what it was for. Reached out to a couple of people and, and found out that most of that was bonus payments. We will receive rent going forward for that, about 30,000 a year. And then, with that, those funds, we were, at the time, working on doing capital facilities plan with the planning and zoning department, and that was gonna cost about 330,000. So it kinda was good timing. We're gonna transfer, down below on Fund 11, it also shows this, but we're gonna transfer 335,000 of these funds to the municipal services fund to pay for the capital facilities plan. And then, we also have budgeted 350,000 to transfer to our capital projects fund. And that will go towards a flood project that we are saving up for to happen in a couple of years from now. So our match on that flood project is 1.8 million. So we're setting aside some fun, funding for that. So that was, that was good timing, good use of, of those pay, those payments for the geothermal leases. Some other things, we, it was mentioned earlier, Terry mentioned with his budget with the new cleaning contract, we're adjusting that line item for the courthouse cleaning up by 15,000. Our unemployment payments, so if people are terminated from the county and file unemployment, we usually have a couple thousand dollars in claims that we pay out every year. This year, it was significantly higher than what we have had in the past. We've already paid out almost $40,000 in claims. And so we're adding $50,000 to that line item. Our search and rescue department, so they received a water rescue grant for $16,000. So we're updating their budget, so that, because they bought that, those supplies, but it is being covered by grant funding. And then they also sold snowmobiles for $17,925. And they're gonna buy a couple new snowmobiles. So they're using part of that 17,000 plus some of their regular budget that they already had. So there's an update for those, sale of those snowmobiles. They mentioned earlier Reed retired, so a couple of months ago, we hired Brett Hamilton and we updated their salary and wages. There was some overlap there during the year to accompany, company for that. In the sheriff's department, we have a few kind of minimal changes. And then, a couple of vehicles that they had to be outfitted last year never got done. They weren't done in time. So we're moving that budget into this year. So there's $60,000 to finish up dating those vehicles. Our warden, fire warden and salary, we received that bill and it was pretty significantly higher than it had been in the past. So that line item is increased by 67,000. We also replaced doors on the fire department building. That was approved in the budget for 2024. It was at the same time when Ryan Riddle was leaving. So then that project never got done. It was pushed into 2025. So that, those funds were not spent in '24, but we're updating that to spend that in 2025. Down on Fund 23, this is the library fund. So depending on how much we receive in property tax towards libraries during that year, we pay that out to Cedar City and to Parwan. So those amounts are adjusted to match what we had received in property tax from last year and those payments to the libraries. And Fund 24, this is the tourism fund. I believe this is on the agenda for today as well. But we're updating the payment to SUU contribution going to them for 750,000 out of Fund 24. And then down in Fund 28, which is the restaurant tax, 750,000 to be paid from SUU, from that fund. And Fund 44, this is our capital projects fund. They have started the engineering and planning for the Iron Springs Road project. We did receive a large federal grant for that project that is being managed, managed through UDOT. We weren't sure if those funds were gonna come to us and then we would pay out all the invoices. UDOT is going to hold and pay out invoices on those funds. The only thing that we're gonna have to pay is our county match. So we have started paying some of that for that planning. So we're adding $15,000 to account for that for '25. And then we'll have more of our county match in 2026. In our sewer fund, this is Fund Number 56. We spent a lot of our impact fees. So there's an update to that budget, which were, those were required to be spent. And then in Fund 61, this is our renewal agency fund. Each year, we receive payments based on property taxes for the different solar projects that are set up in the county. And it just depends on what their value is that year. So we don't know what those payments are gonna be until they report their values in May. And then whatever the real property value is from the assessor's office. So every year, we update the money we receive and then what we're gonna pay out for those incentive payments. That's all of the changes within Fund 61. And Fund 64, our fleet department, we received three vehicles that were donated as a federal grant, or it may have been a state grant. So we received three vehicles. We have to account for that by stating that we receive revenue for that and expensing those, even though we didn't get any cash. But for the correct accounting entry, we have to book that revenue and expense. So there is an adjustment for those donated vehicles. And then, kinda like within the sheriff's department, there were a few things that got delayed from 2024, so the funds were never spent. So we're just updating 2025 for that time delay. Any questions on any of those items?
All right, so I'll go ahead and this chair declare a public hearing open for this item number one. Should anybody like to speak to it? It's the first time I've ever seen Tom Jet not wanna say something. Sorry, Tom. All right, public hearing will be closed and we'll go to a vote. Let's see, do we need to have, we don't need a vote on this one then, right? Or do we?
I believe it happens later.
It is? So we don't need to vote now, we vote later? Okay, got it. Because I didn't see a vote. Okay. We'll go to number four, public comments. Three minutes time limit per speaker, oh, through public appointment section. Public comments, three minutes per speaker for a public comment. If you have a comment, please approach the mic and state your name. Seeing none, we'll move to number five, presentation by the Pioneer Legacy Musical Production and Firework Spectacular Request by Justin Osmond.
Morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Blake, good to see you again.
Good to see you, Justin.
We are super excited. First of all, we wanna say thank you. So last year, but we didn't do it this year because SUU, they redid their, the Coliseum Stadium, they renovated everything, so we kinda put this year on hold. But we just wanted to come in and say thank you for your support. I've been working with Maria Twitschel on the tourism, wonderful gal.
Maria right there.
Oh, she's here.
He, he complimented you and he didn't even know you were here. That's real nice.
She's glad you were nice.
It's on tape. Anyway, thank you, Maria. She's been wonderful to work with and looking forward to hopefully partnering with Iron County. We felt like this is a great fit. But just to get started, we'll just show you just a quick highlight reel. I'm not sure if you guys had a chance to go to the event there, but it was just a, my dad sitting right over there, looks like Santa Claus. He, we, we have received so much overwhelming feedback from all the county and city residents of Iron County. But here's just a quick highlight reel for you to take a look at. So it, it was a great success. Thanks for your support. Oh, sorry. You wanna watch it again?
I felt like I should clap.
Thank you, John. Thank you for putting that together. And really, we just wanted to say thank you. We would love to, your continued support on that. All the mayors, Garth Green, which I think he's the new mayor, we haven't met him yet, but we're meeting with Mayor Holtermann on Thursday. And just, everybody just wants to be a part of it again. Let me just, just a little history leading up to this. My dad is the one leading this whole thing. He started the Stadium of Fire, which you might have heard of in Provo. Basically, we're kinda taking that same concept, but bringing that here instead of on the 4th of July, on the 24th of July, which is Pioneer Weekend. Founder, co-founder of the Children's Miracle Network. So we bring a lot of experience to the table. Uh, beep, next beep, you hear that, that's the next slide. Um, uh, again, this is one thing that we take a lot of pride in. Is we we partnered with the children or the Cedar City Children's Musical Theater. I think that's the name of it. We we want all cast members to be local. Uh, cuz you guys have talent in this beautiful county. And so we we used to bring people, kids from outside. Um, but we we love working with the the Cedar City uh Children's Musical Theater. Um, like I said, it's a youth production, all young kids. Were you able to to go to the show? I'm just curious. Um, if you did, great. Um, we'd love for you to, another invite to come with us again. Uh, beep. Uh, again, it kinda gives you an idea, you saw it in the highlight video. We we also pay tribute to the to the to the Native Americans as well, the Indians. Uh, next slide. Uh, oh, and this is, if you if you saw the show, uh, we do nothing but fireworks, that's kind of our specialty, especially my dad. Especially when he did the Ronald Reagan inaugural, um, that we kinda brought that back to Utah. But if you saw the show, you'll notice it's a lot like the Bellagio, the dancing water show. It's synchronized not just with water, but with fireworks, telling the story of the pioneers throughout the show. Um, we do a great pre-show leading up to uh the event. And part of that is we honor uh modern day pioneers. If you were there, uh, last time we honored Henry Lunt. We come in, we did a lot of research and man, you guys have a strong pioneer grassroots uh town right here in Iron County. So we wanna honor that, we wanna respect that and tell that story. Um, this next year, uh, not 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 yet, but we're thinking of honoring, um, there's a movie out right now called Raising the Bar. Um, and we find out he's right here in Pear One. Uh, so we might honor him this next time, we have, we're in discussion with that right now with our committee. Um, but this, we have a little video from the governor, Governor Cox. He is extremely supportive of 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 this event and let's go ahead and watch this.
Hi, I'm Governor Spencer Cox and it's my pleasure to welcome you to Merrill Osmond's Youth Pioneer Production and Firework Spectacular. Remembering and paying tribute to the sacrifice and triumph of our Utah pioneers inspires feelings of gratitude and admiration. During this youth pioneer production, pioneer stories are celebrated beautifully through dance and music. As you watch and listen to this wonderful performance, I encourage you to ponder the enduring legacy of the founders of our state. Who sacrificed all that they had in order to settle here. They built a promising future for generations to come and serve as an inspiration for all who study their lives and their story.
The governor is a good friend of ours, but again, he's very supportive, uh, we've been doing this uh for quite some time. Um, we started up in Salt Lake City and then we, our family moved down here to Southern Utah. I tried to convince my wife to to move to Cedar City here in Iron County, but she wanted to go a little bit further south. Uh, so we live in Hurricane now. And then from there, we we partnered with the Dixie State University, I think they're called Utah Tech now, or whatever they're called. Um, and we did it for two. Was that?
No one knows.
No one knows, exactly. But that, we did find out that it's way too hot there in the summertime. And so after two years, we we decided to just move a little bit further north. We met with President Benson at SUU and she gave us a beautiful home uh there in um in Cedar City. And the weather was perfect, the kids weren't having um with their hot bonnets and everything having meltdown. And so we we feel like we found a home here in Iron County and we love it. And so um, one thing, just just some of the key points here, it's non-denominational. Uh, and it's not all about the LDS pioneers, it's about everyone that came here to this valley to to settle this. Uh, we see this as the largest pioneer attraction uh on everyone's mind and it's an annual event, good, clean, family entertainment. And and the great thing about this is. It's free. Uh, this is not a moneymaker for our family. Uh, this has been nothing but a labor of love for us, my dad and I. Um, we love our pioneers, I know you guys do too, I see, I've been walking around, you have all the awesome pictures of your pioneers here in Iron County. And so, and then everything, and so with that, we we rely on all of support, uh, community support. I know you have helped us in the past, uh, anything you can do to help us continue that, uh, we we can't do it without you. Uh, we can only do so much alone, but together we can do so much more. Anything that we raise on top of production cost goes towards helping um deaf children. Last year, we were able to help a deaf family in Cedar City with the Gift of Hearing, uh, the charity we do in honor of our grandmother. And these are all the other children that we've helped over the years. Uh, so two things, we promote or we uh honor the the legacy of our pioneers. And two, we give back to the community uh through the gift of Better Hearing. And so with that, we'd love to continue your partnership and we feel like this is a great fit. And again, like I said, you helped us last year, Maria, thank you for your your support. And with that, I'd like to bring up uh the one that started this whole thing, he's the one that wrote this whole production, uh, founded this whole thing. And I'll just have him say some concluding remarks. My dad Merrill.
Hi Merrill.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I again wanna uh say what Justin said, thank you for your support, uh, means a whole lot. Uh, just wanna take a second and create for you, if you don't mind, the vision of why we're here and what this is all about. Uh, our family, met those of you that know about the Osmond family. Uh, it's been an interesting battle. For sixty five years, we've tried to create family image, family concepts. And it's been extremely difficult because the entertainment industry is anti-family, anti. Sponsorships, television, they would rather put their money and stuff to to commercialize the young people. And I'm sure you all understand exactly what I mean. So the fight to keep family out there in in the public has been a challenge. And the Osmond family have tried really hard to try to keep that going around the world. Here's what I just wanna focus in on just for a second. Everything we do in life, all of us uh have challenges, we all have, but we have dreams. And we hopefully can make those dreams happen if we all pull together. In my, in my case, when we decided to create the the Stadium of Fire. My wife and I put up all the money. For three years, we lost our shorts. But today, it's the largest Fourth of July spectacular around the wor- around the country. And so are we glad we invested yet? Because I think that creates the patriotism. Now, we're in trouble, our kids are in trouble. Because the pioneer spirit is gone in a lot of our youth. And my son and I have really pondered this and the Osmond family, we need to do something about it. And so we at least have tried to create this opportunity and we think we have a model. That will help bring a little bit of that back in our kids. And right in your area here has began to make that process happen. Every ch- every child that has been in this so far will go home, they'll sing the songs. And they'll they'll never forget the experience of paying tribute to those who gave everything. We've lost money. We thank you for the your support and we are continuing to ask for your support. But we're, but we have not made it yet. And so just like the Stadium of Fire, we're out asking everybody that believes in this concept to please, please, help us. This is not a moneymaker, this is simply about trying to bring back patriotism to those who who are on the other side. Trying to en- encourage us. So again, I I'm only here to say, I'm an old man and I've been doing this a long time. And this is why I'm gray. Because we believe in dreams and we.
He's actually white, not gray.
I'm actually white and I am Santa Claus. But I just pray that everybody that hears with the governor, we're gonna meet with him again. We've, Justin set up a lot of sponsor meetings with, and I'm gonna go with him. Because it's important. I mean, the only thing we have left is our children. And hopefully they'll leave the legacy that we've tried to create, so that's why we're here. We hope that you feel it, we hope that you'll believe in it. We would love to have you increase the money that you gave us last year, we hope you'll do that and consider that. So with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
We do. Yes, come up to the mic and state your name. Gimpie.
Is that with a G?
So my name's Tom Jet. Okay, now let me just say this right up front. Government oversteps its bounds quite often on what we put money into. But when it comes to programs like this that educate and benefit the youth and 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 the geezers like myself. I'm all in favor of it. And and that's hard for me to say that I like our tax dollars going to the non-essential services. But ultimately, the way this country has gone. If we don't continue to to show respect to our past, we'll forget it and we will repeat it. So, uh, not as wealthy as the county, but my organization would donate two hundred and fifty dollars to this organization. I just need to get the the transfer information from the Osmonds. I met Mr. Osmond about, oh, I think two years ago maybe, at city council, he spoke for a few minutes. And I told him I remember from the early sixties, I think it was nineteen sixty four, but I, it was early sixties, sitting with my father. I was, I was a young boy then. Sitting with my mom and father and my five siblings, watching, I believe it was the Ed Sullivan Show, I believe that was it. Watching the Osmonds and what a great, great childhood that was. And I did not grow up in the faith, but I did, but the the joy that they gave to everybody was awesome. And us kids learned to sing the songs, well, parts of them, and and it it was great. So I thank the Osmonds for this and I thank everybody that contributes to this cause, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Um, are there any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to, well, I guess, um, number six, right? Discussion on possible approval of memorandum of agreement between Iron County and SUU for donation of funds for university projects. Who's taking that?
Sam.
Sam?
Good morning, commissioners. Let's talk about this. Um, I don't recall when the first time we had the SU come and talk with the commission about this, but it was some time ago. Uh, they talked about possible uses uh for these funds. Um, the commissioners uh gave some good questions uh for um. Kind of the partnership between the county and SU and what that would look like. Uh, really looking to uh maximize the benefit uh for Iron County, uh, knowing that they're putting into this project. Good money that will go to a good cause. So, um, we've worked with SUU, um. Uh, their counsel as well as uh Mr. Oglesby, who I believe is present. Um, Commissioner Blake has taken a uh the spearhead uh from the commission and being part of those discussions. Uh, but we have arrived at an agreement. Um, it's a ten-year agreement. Um, and it's not so much a contract as it is, again, a memorialization of the uh the terms. Uh, for the county's contribution to SUU and they've outlined it really well. Uh, they've set the amount that's gonna be donated. Um, they have put some parameters on the use of those funds uh in conjunction with the county. Uh, specifically. Um, it's going to the America First Event Center. But if there are additional funds after that project is complete, it specifies uh where it's gonna go. And you may or may not have the most recent agreement in your.
Okay.
Um. This is not the most recent one, John.
Okay.
Um, but i- it's not totally different than this. Uh, some updates include. Um. Uh. I believe the scheduling was the same, but uh the county has priority scheduling after SUU's events. Um, that means that the the county will have the opportunity to meet with SU. Uh, when they sit down to to go over planning and earmark specific events that the county has. Um, an interest in whatever county-sponsored events, uh, we'll be able to say we'd like to schedule it before you put it out to general public. So that's provided for. Um, they also allowed for uh two events per academic year. Um, that would allow the county to use SU facilities and they would waive fees associated with that. So again, a nod to the contribution, they're saying uh we'll waive fees for two events that the county wants to use SU facilities for throughout the year. Um, it does specify a semi-annual meeting with the county uh to discuss the project as well as updates uh regarding the accounting. Um, and it also recognizes the county for the donation. So we will have uh in our discussions either a plaque or a standalone kind of pedestal. Uh, noting the partnership between SU and Iron County for the contribution of those funds. Now, because of the specific uh terms that SU has for the APEC or the America First Event Center. Um, the pedestal will have to be off of that building, but we can put a plaque in multiple locations or that pedestal, so that recognizes that. Um, let me just see if there's anything else. Those are the high points that we talked about. It sets the schedule for donations and Maria is taking charge on that. But um, what did I miss, Maria? Commissioner Blake, anything specific we wanna talk about? Any questions you have about? Um, what this is trying to to cover? This is a little bit above and beyond what they would typically do for a donation. So again, this is a memorialization of what uh our agreement is. And uh, I think it does a good job kind of outlining what we're seeking and recognizes the county in a uh a very good way.
Just, I, I'd like to say. Uh, so. Legally, SUU can take in donations or funding a couple of different ways and there. It it's, it's kinda, I don't, I don't know weird, but it's a little, it's a little janky. Not, I don't, that's not even the right word, just it's, it's different in the academic world than it is elsewhere. There's just some parameters. Um, one thing that that we wanted to make really clear in all these negotiations is. This isn't the donations as donations go, where somebody walks in, provides a large amount of money. Uh, and walks away, uh, because these are tax dollars, these are not private, these are not private dollars. Um, a- and we had that conversation over and over and over again. The the way that they are allowed to accept money, it goes, there, there's a lot. We have a lot more control, there's less strings tied by other entities if this goes as a gift. Um, so the term gift is basically a legal term that SU has, that that's the manner in which they can accept. And also allow us to be partners and and not just a donor that that provides, that provides funding and then walks away. So when we talk about a gift, uh. Knowing that that, that they are public funds. Uh, we as the county have a responsibility legislatively, and you know, by legislate, by the legislature. Of what those funds can be used for and specific, specific uh things and accomplishments and goals that that, those monies can be used for. And so in our negotiations, we made sure that all of, all of our funds will go and fit within the parameters. Of what the legislature has set aside for TRT and TRCC. Um, I mean, this just was not taken lightly. I don't know how many actual meetings we had with various uh legal entities. Um, our county attorney's office has been involved every step of the way. Uh, Southern Utah University's general counsel has been involved. Uh. In the end, I I think we came to a really good consensus of of what these funds will be used for. And I believe that they will be super beneficial uh moving forward to Southern Utah University, the citizens of Iron County. Uh, and meet the goals legislatively, you know, set forth for those funds through hotel and restaurant tax. set forth for those funds through hotel and restaurant tax. There's just been a lot of time and effort put into that and, and it's, I think it's going to be an exciting project. Even more so than the, you know, the initial discussions we had. We've really nailed down every aspect of it. So I'll just, I'd say that kind of is to the process. I don't know if Maria and John fill in the, fill in any gaps. They're just here as gap fillers.
I'm happy to help fill in gaps. John Oglesby with the Larry H Miller Utah Summer Games and Southern Utah University. I just want to say, um, I think just a heartfelt gratitude to the county, but particularly to Commissioner Blake and Maria for really how involved they were. Stewardship of dollars is, I think, one of the highest callings any of us have in, in any profession. I think stewardship particularly of public dollars and dollars that are specifically earmarked to provide economic engagement opportunities. There's a lot of responsibility that comes with that. And I for one have appreciated the tough questions about it and have appreciated the, hey, that sounds okay, but let's work to get to something much better. It's been an exhaustive process. It's been a process where both legal councils, uh, to Commissioner Blake's point, have pushed, not pushed back in a negative sense, but have made sure that the terms were appropriate for both sides. And I think that this is an example, uh, I believe, of an outstanding public partnership that I think is going to lead to a lot of positive results for private industry members, particularly in the hospitality and restaurant se- sector for many years to come. And I think just looking at the events, particularly on the sports tourism side that we're able to bring in because of this. Maria and her team have done a great job of helping us understand. Basically, every time we host a high school state tournament multi-day event, it's an approximate $1.3 million impact to the county, um, in revenue that's spent. These facilities, right now, we're doing anywhere from two to three of those a year. That, that takes that up, um, and doubles it basically to the potential provided we have people that want to book. So there's real dollars that are behind, uh, what we have that's available to us because of having these facilities that we're able to bring in on our side and hosting at the university. And so I think I'll just say with that, that I appreciate the, um, the intensity of the discussions and the conversation about it. The university very much understands. The support of the county very much understands the, um, responsibility of stewardship that we have on behalf of the county. And I think we're enthusiastically ready for that and ready to get going to work. I don't know if anybody has any questions on the university side, but happy to answer them if so.
I know the answers. It's been an exhaustive process, but no, I, if there's the other commissioners have any questions?
Yes, it's Commissioner Robinson.
Good. Appreciate it.
You know, Maria, you traveled all this way.
I'm traveling again and I'm leaving as soon as this meeting is over to Ogden. So, um, I do just want to say that, yes, this has been an exhaustive process, but it's been a good process in that the cooperation between the two entities has been solidified, I believe, in a way that, um, at the end of the day, it's all about, you know, for us, it's, um, in terms of my department, it is about economic development. It's about bringing people in, having them spend dollars, um, and have that circulate throughout our county and benefit our citizens. So we know that this agreement is going to bring those opportunities to our county. And, and it's coming at a time when we, you know, things are happening and we need to take advantage of that. Sports tourism is definitely, um, a very, I don't know, I want to say safe, but it's a very good economic generator. It tends to be a little recession-proof. And it tends to, um, have some great impact that you can feel for many years. We see that with Utah Summer Games. We've seen that with some of the tournaments that have been brought in. So we're, we're excited to get moving on this. So, thank you, and if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Can I just, I, I want to point out one specific, you know, the, the, we have represent- representation from the sheriff's department here. We have secured a, uh, a cop prom space for the next three years. That's one of the, uh, specifically in the, uh, negotiations. When we talk about two, when we talk about, you know, two events per year, one of those events, uh, specifically for the next three years is the sheriff's department gala that was negotiated into those terms. No. Just, 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 just the space and fees. We did what we could. We, we did what we could. Because food is actually an outside vendor issue that's, like, we, we got you all we could.
All right. Thank you very much. Number seven, resolution 2025-11, adopting 2025 budget amendments.
See, um, did we need to vote on that one?
Oh, yeah, we do need to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We do need to approve that one.
Missed that one. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion on the approval of that. I'm sorry.
I'll do it.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't know who's, I don't know, anyway. Uh, move for approval of the memorandum of agreement between Iron County and SUU for donation, donation of funds for the university projects. The total amount over the course of three years, right, is, uh, $2.75 million.
Second that motion. They moved a second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Number seven, resolution 2025-11, adopting the 2025 budget amendments.
So we had the public hearing on this. I don't really have anything else to add unless you guys have anything.
Nope.
No.
Entertain a motion?
Make a motion to approve the 2025 budget amendments.
Second.
So it moved a second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Number eight, resolution 2025-12, adopting the 2026 final budget.
So we had the public hearing on this last commission meeting. I don't think we had any public comments. Have you guys had anything come up since then that you want to discuss? Or if not, I think we're good to leave it where we were at.
Okay.
Go for it.
I move for approval of resolution 2025-12, adopting the 2026 final budget.
Second that.
So it moved a second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. That's funny.
Did not expect clapping today.
I don't think we've ever seen that before, Shalon, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'll just donate the pom poms.
Number nine, discussion on possible approval of the 2026 commission meeting schedule.
Okay, um, so we develop this each year based on, uh, the payroll. Well, not, not, the payroll is kind of independent, but the, but the calendar dates, the, um, holidays. Um, as you know, we, we do the second and fourth Mondays at 9:00 AM. And we have, in recent years, added the tentative budget, budget hearing and adoption note, because this becomes, uh, also a public notice that we make. And so we've, we've kind of added those. If you'll notice, um, on May 26th, that's a Tuesday, and that's because of, um, Memorial Day. And so, um, being on the 25th, um, that looks like about the only exception this year. Sometimes if we have a Monday holiday, we'll have a meeting on Tuesday, uh, and that's the only one. Unless you want me to change it, and we can change. Want to have them at 2:00 AM on Sundays?
No.
I've not seen a lot of interest there, okay? Just curious.
Sounds good to me.
No, I'm good.
Okay. Need a motion on that?
Make a motion to approve the Iron County Commission meeting schedule for 2026.
Second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Jennifer, personnel.
Thank you, good morning. Um, in the, uh, Sheriff's Office Patrol, Brandon Rowley was selected from the most recent internal process to receive a promotion from a full-time deputy to a full-time corporal, beginning 12/7 of 2025. And then in the Council on Aging Department, Rochelle Fracio was selected from the most recent competitive interview and selection process to backfill the vacant part-time assistant cook position effective 12/9 of 2025.
Any discussion on that?
Nope.
No? Entertain a motion?
I'll move for approval of personnel items A, B and corresponding numbers.
Second that motion. Moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Is there any county boards we need to discuss?
You took care of them last time. I will bring forward, if not the first meeting, the second meeting of January, just review county boards.
I know that we have a vacancy on the tourism board. But that is generally the, uh, hoteliers association makes a nomination. And so we'll, we'll get a nomination from them for, for approval. Probably after the first of the year.
Did we have a closed session?
Yes, um, so it's the, uh, there's a closed session regarding, um, IT security. Jared Wilson has requested that. He, he tried a while back and he ended up getting, he was in Albuquerque with a new grandbaby, so.
We had a little meeting lined up right after to talk about an ordinance thing.
Yeah.
So do we need to probably take, is that going to take long? This IT?
I don't know.
Closed session? Uh, you don't think so?
Jared's got just a couple of things to talk through with you. And the reason it's a closed session is because we don't want to discuss our security techniques with the public.
Of course. Are you, Tom, you okay for a minute? Okay. I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
It was also Luke wanted to visit with you about, um, those- data centers. And Colonel Matheson is here. So we, we're stacked up. I don't think Jared will take too long, and he is here, so.
And yours is just a meeting, just to talk about, it's not a closed session. So let's go ahead and take care of the closed session then real quick and then, and then we'll, Tom, we'll, and Brett, we'll talk, we'll talk after that.
Oh, sorry. So you'll say?
Okay, I moved in or into a closed session per UCA 52-4-205. Want to have to discuss deployment of security personnel devices and systems, or systems.
Second. I don't know, I don't know why I had so much trouble with that.
Design to go in a closed session, in favor?
Aye.
All right, Chair declares the closed session ended and we are now back into open session. And I think we covered everything, so Chair declares this meeting adjourned. Thank you. Tom?